I know that way really well.
Magnolia?
Yeah, redid the whole deck. Good morning, everybody. We will call the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two CRA meeting to order. I would ask if there are any amendments to the minutes of the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting?
Move approved. The minutes as submitted.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous. Four point, or I don't see any citizens in the audience, anyone to be heard, any staff to be heard on random subjects for the CRA. Seeing none, four point one.
Approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Clearwater and the Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA Pinellas County, and the Clearwater Housing Authority to provide for revenue sharing and the redevelopment of three oh six South Washington Avenue and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Hi, Amanda Thompson, CRA Director. So this is, um, this item and the next item we discussed last month. So here this morning to ask for you to consider the first one, this interlocal agreement. I will be asking that you continue the second item, the development agreement. Um, and just a little bit more background, um, as you see on the aerial here, I guess it's not pulled up now. Um, two things, the CRA essentially has under site control right now, two sites that we are recommending for mixed income, affordable and workforce development. So one is the South Washington site, which is what we're discussing right now. And then the other one is twelve fifty Cleveland over here that we have a current development agreement with Archway Partners. And I'm providing a little bit of background because I feel like I've been coming back and discussing these projects a lot, um, which might be confusing to maybe you, maybe the public. And the reason being is that affordable housing, as you know, is difficult already, and it's even more complicated when we're adding in multiple funding sources. So as we're looking at both of these sites, you're looking at city federal funds through the home loan program. You're looking at CRA funding. You're looking at Pinellas County funding through Pennies for Pinellas, which is a separate application process, and then in some cases, maybe even state tax credits. So we're in that environment where we have multiple agencies that are reviewing and looking at approving funding sources for these projects as well as very volatile construction cost. So with that in mind, um, we know affordable and workforce housing is a need. We also know it's a very explicitly defined CRA purpose. So you might be asking, well, why are we putting money into affordable and workforce versus market rate or other kinds of projects? One is it's one of our clearly defined state purposes. We have county restrictions on those funds. And I think after these two sites, uh, we're really looking at more fill-in projects, the missing middle, maybe accessory dwellings, whatever comes out of the comp plan for those different housing types, because these are the last two big sites that we have. The Bluff properties, um, the site next to, uh, the warehouse here at Court and Myrtle, those are going to be market rate and/or hotel. So, so we're really focused on locking down these two sites and getting that funding in place. So that being said, where are we now? So asking today to approve the interlocal agreement, and as we've outlined here, there's, uh, several parties involved. The Clearwater Housing Authority, which would ultimately be the owner of the project and the manager of the project as envisioned right now, um, Pinellas County, and the land trust will own the underlying land as their application moves through the Pennies for Pinellas project, uh, the city and the CRA. So all of those entities and what that, um, outlines here is the different funding that each group would provide. It also agrees to revenue sharing. So normally if the housing authority owns a project, it would be completely tax exempt. And this looks at, um, sharing four hundred dollars a unit between the county and between the city. Of course, the vast majority of that money comes to the CRA through at the tip that we collect until the CRA expires in a couple of years, well, about ten years. So the first thing we would do is, um, we'd recommend that you adopt this interlocal agreement. This enables us to start the conversation with the other entities officially start the conversation, um, giving them something to respond to. Then we're working with Southport, the current developer, and CHA to, uh, complete the site readiness, which we've already discussed, up to three hundred thousand dollars to get clean structural fill dirt in there, get, um, all the stuff, the, um, big vault out that doesn't need to be there, and then permitting cost. It's extremely hard to estimate construction costs if you don't have construction plans. So what we're looking at right now is how much will it cost to get us to sixty-five or seventy percent complete construction documents? Because right now the subcontractors are HVAC, you're electrical, they won't even give true estimates. So looking at that, um, CHA will apply for the Pennies for Pinellas grant funds. Then we would come back and finalize the development agreement, um, get those construction permits and those costs nailed down, um, clean and prepare the site, and then determine when we can move forward with, um, construction. The housing authority is committed to this project. Unfortunately, Jacqueline Rivera couldn't be here today. Her husband had some, um, health issues last week. And for them, it's not an issue to agree to this, and they develop and manage, right, mixed-use projects. It's the numbers have to come down so that they can pay back the bonds that they issue. They have a pretty large bonding capacity, but the project still hasn't generated enough revenue to pay those bonds back. So I will pause there and ask if you have any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Councilmember Albrecht.
So with where we are right now, what do you think the timeline is? I mean, you have an estimate on when you think you get all this together?
I'm, I'm very hesitant to say just because I, the war, you know, between Russia and Ukraine.
Yeah.
I mean, my, uh, I don't know. We would be ready with permits. But yes, we can, in six to nine months, we can have plans ready.
Seems like Q one of twenty-three.
And then the question is, what is that remaining funding gap?
Right.
That materials may actually come down. We'll see. Councilmember Beckman.
So I have some questions. Um, as you said, that these are two sites are really the last two bigger apartment sites. And if we're entering into a partnership with especially the Washington Apartment Project, you know, when I looked at on the next agenda item that we're going to table for today, and you can look at the plans, it looks like there is a ton of flat roof there. And so when I'm, there are a couple of things. When I'm looking at when the City of Clearwater is partnering with someone, and we have, um, green print goals and the county has, uh, energy efficient goals as well as environmental goals, and if the county is going to partner on this, this is where I think we need to be very aggressive in saying, we want solar on that development. We want to make sure it's as efficient as possible, especially for common areas. When I looked at the list of costs, they had heating and air conditioning, I think they had listed for common areas and things like that. So there are things, there are costs to the people who live there that we can make an impact on by requiring certain things, especially because we're one of the owners, the partners. And so I think this is a great opportunity to really look at that. So that's, that'll be one of my questions as we, whenever this comes back up to really talk about the development itself. The other thing is, when I looked at, um, the distribution of units, we've got eighteen affordable units at eighty percent AMI, forty-nine at a hundred percent, and a hundred and four, um, at a hundred and twenty percent. Can we flip-flop those numbers? Because why not? I mean, if this is the la, these are the last two big ones, because other, after these two, it's going to be filled projects.
Well, these are, these are the last two where we own the property. It doesn't mean that another affordable project might not come in. But I think if we lower the AMI, my guess is that it becomes less feasible.
Impossible.
Really?
And the reason, and this is one reason why the housing authority is willing to take over this project is because the a hundred and twenty percent units, which that's an income restriction for a household of two of seventy thousand, um, they are the ones that pay to subsidize the lower units. So, and, and that's why you're seeing more the shift of truly a mixed income, right? Because how the other ones work that are under eighty percent is they have, you know, additional federal subsidy. And this has no federal subsidy. It's the, the mixture of the income is what helps pay for it all.
Can we ask for more subsidies from the county?
Well, at this point, the county's put in about six million. Um, so we could, I'm not sure what other source they would use that is different than what, than say a federal source.
I mean, you know, we're having these, you know, different municipalities are meeting on ARPA funds and our housing crisis. And I just, I just wonder, you know, I mean, just eighteen are, are at eighty percent. I mean, I don't want to throw big, I'm not going to throw a big wrench in it. But, you know, as we, as we look at affordable apartments for workers who are making fifteen to twenty-five dollars an hour, they, you know, are they going to be able to live here? So that was one thing. So anyway, just a heads up that those are things that I'll be, you know, that are important to me. It's not, you know, any big secret, but, um, yeah, I mean, did anybody else notice how much flat roof space there is there?
But, but wasn't originally the, uh, Cleveland Street Development wasn't part, wasn't part of the plan to move the community garden up onto that roof in a portion of that?
Different projects.
I'm talking about, oh, but you're talking specifically of this proof. No, there's a lot.
For Washington.
There's definitely, and I have a, well, I'll, I'll speak about it later, but, uh.
But it, that was part, I mean, it was part of the question as well is, because it's so massive, get some solar on it, get a rooftop garden on it, do something that's, um, you know, environmentally wise.
Well, I think you need to do calculations on that. Certainly, they can do a calculation on what that cost benefit is. Anything else, Vice Mayor?
No.
Councilmember Bunker, anything?
I, I love the project, and we're happy to do a lot of juggling to make it work. I, I agree solar, uh, would be terrific. A, a, as it is now, um, I'm happy to move forward. I, I think solar is coming down so much, um, so hopefully, uh, we'll be able to tack that on.
Well, and I'd like to add too, that when we talk about solar's coming down too much, and let's look at the numbers and ROI, we also have carbon reduction goals in green print that, you know, we have goals, that we're going to reduce carbon emissions, and so that's a benefit as well. So we might have a, a return on investment, but we also have a reduction of pollution, um, and carbon emissions that we need to meet that goal as well.
Well, the costs were coming down. Now they're going back up because of the silica and some of the things going on in China and Russia, so.
And state legislation.
Let me ask you a question. Um, it says that fifty percent of the net surplus revenues of the project shall be retained by CHA and used for any purpose consistent with chapter four twenty-one. Can you tell me what some of those uses are?
Sure. That's the mission of housing authorities. So that would be the operations of the housing authority. That would be maintenance of their properties, um, I mean, generally, and construction of new affordable housing.
So does it stay onsite or can it be spread to all of their different projects?
Well, there's, there's two parts to that. One, they do have a, uh, restriction that they have to maintain a certain maintenance fund for this site and operations. But anything above and beyond that, they could spend at any of their sites.
Okay. So in the early years, if there is a surplus and there's not as much maintenance because you get a honeymoon period, it could be spread over to their other sites?
Absolutely.
They don't have to leave it in a sinking fund?
They do not.
Okay. Other questions? Have a motion?
Motion to approve, agenda four point one.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous, four point two.
And four point two, this is the item that we're requesting be continued to the next meeting.
Head to a date uncertain?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue agenda item four point two.
To a date uncertain.
To a date uncertain.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous, four point three.
Approve the placemaking and resident engagement grant program for property owners, tenants, organizations, or individuals to fund placemaking and outreach opportunities that assist in transforming downtown Clearwater into a destination filled with a variety of active, beautiful, and creative public spaces. Um, Eric Santiago, our, uh, Public Relations and Programs Manager, is here to present this request.
Good morning. Uh, Eric Santiago, CRA Programs, uh, and Public Relations Manager, here to introduce, um, the new program. So the placemaking and resident engagement grant program. Um, the goal is to provide support and funding, um, to those who want to make positive and transformative change to downtown. Really, uh, this is going to be to energize downtown. So currently, the most way, currently, most activities happen in the CRA are either directly organized by the CRA or receive tough, some type of funding from the DDB or the CRA to bring those activities here. And by activities, this is going to look at things outside of events. So, um, things that don't often happen, um, and that we want to happen more. Um, so this program will provide additional, um, sources, um, and for those looking to do that. This will directly, um, uh, influence focus area number three. Uh, focus area number three for this year is to invest in placemaking and, uh, placekeeping. Um, so that's the next slide. Oh, I click? No, sorry. All right, first time here. Um, so this will, um, directly solve, uh, focus area number three, uh, which is, um, the goal that we have for this year. This will also look at, uh, the middle, um, our number two objective for focus area number three, uh, which will develop three signature placemaking programs. Instead of doing three, what we've done is we've simplified this into one program that will focus on three different audiences and reward them, um, with more incentives. Uh, the placemaking program objectives are, the overall goal is to make it easier for those looking to create thriving public spaces that connect our target audiences. Um, the target audiences, um, are going to be connecting employees and residents to downtown and providing additional support for downtown employees, children, and art tech. There's three types of placemaking that this program, uh, will work with. Standard placemaking, creative, and tactical, and then the other component is resident outreach. Uh, resident outreach is going to be programs that connect Clearwater residents to downtown and activates downtown's public spaces. Placemaking, um, is the universal term for the process of creating places where people want to be. Um, this process consists of small projects, um, and activities that engage and empower people while improving the quality of the space. Um, so everything with placemaking is going to go back to the place, the physical place in which it happens. Um, and I'll provide examples of this on the upcoming slides. Eligible projects will do one of three types of things, beautification, activations, or engagement. Um, and there's multiple, um, types of that. So beautification most often is going to be art, um, decorations, and then physical improvements, again, back to the place. Activations will be cultural, um, entertainment, also things like displays. Um, and this is where the technology, um, component will be involved. Um, and engagement will be, uh, place branding, community gardens, um, recreational, physical activities, and then also, um, activities for community itself. Uh, we have some photos here of lots of different types of projects. So, um, again, this is going to be things that are going to be visually stimulating, exciting, active. Um, so we have multiple examples here, um, pop-up art installations that are going to be, you know, easier to do on display for a period of time. Um, in the lower corner and then the, uh, top right, uh, those are people spots which take over a physical parking space, um, for a use other than a car to park there. Um, so again, these are new types of public spaces that are created. Also going to be things like activities. So here we have, um, you know, type of yoga or, you know, a program out in a physical space, um, programs for childrens, programs for dogs. Again, this is going to be able to really capture a lot of people. Um, also things that are like physically beautiful. So you see in the middle, um, the idea of creating a canopy. Um, this one uses umbrellas, but really, anything you can think of can be used for beautifying, um, downtown. So, I don't, I think I went too far. Okay, so these are the places that we have targeted specifically. So Cleveland Street, four hundred, five hundred block, um, the trail, um, both of our parks within the CRA. Um, and then these last three are really going to be, you know, all over the CRA. So underutilized or underbeautified spaces, um, beautified locations, um, vacant spaces. And then really, this is the last one is where people think there is a need for placemaking. So there may be places that we don't know about, um, and as long as it's in the CRA and they can justify it, then we are welcoming to seeing those spots. So program details, um, anyone can apply for this program. So property owners, tenants, organizations, individuals, really broad. If people want to do something, we want to hear their ideas. Um, grants awarded up to twenty-five thousand dollars per project. Eligibility will, uh, be determined by the project itself. So it's not a standardized formula. We, again, we want to see what they want to do and then figure it out from there. Um, applicants may request a fifty percent, uh, seed funding. Um, and then again, this is a reimbursement, um, uh, project. Target audience. So I did mention that, uh, we do want to reward the target audience. For the target audience, they can receive up to one hundred percent of the funding, and that is, um, downtown employees, families, children, and then incorporating art and tech elements. Um, projects led by Clearwater Neighborhood Associations will also be able to receive one hundred percent of their funding. Um, and that's really that resident engagement. And then applications must demonstrate support. Um, and this is a key, uh, I think, feature of the program is we want applicants to, you know, be working with the community itself. So community must, you must provide a support letter with your application from a local nonprofit organization, chamber of commerce, condo or community association, or if not one of those, at least two residents within the CRA. So we want to know that there's buy-in for your program. So that in essence is the placemaking and resident engagement program. What staff is recommending is allocating fifty thousand dollars, um, for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year for this, uh, grant program. If approved, it would start on May second. Any questions?
Questions? I normally don't like programs that fund a hundred percent. I like when there's a little bit of skin in the game. I understand that if we have that as a criterion, that it, that they may not occur, obviously. But that one does concern me. I, I like people having something, but it's only fifty thousand dollars. So it's not like this is an enormous budget. But going forward, I would like to see some type of either sweat equity, which we could count, uh, or actual financial support. But I'm not too hung up on, on this one, seeing as it's only fifty thousand. Councilmember Beckman?
Yeah, I, you know, read this agenda item. It looks exciting. Um, I was wondering a couple of things. Uh, is there any overlap with some of the beautification projects with other grant projects in the CRA? And how are you going to decide if there is?
So we won't allow people to double dip.
Okay.
Essentially, so, you know, there are other programs that the city has, like there, you know, there's a community garden program. So it's really, you know, look at what is going to be the better fit for your program. But yeah, we wouldn't allow people to be able to apply for multiple programs for one project.
Okay. I was thinking like the mural, you know?
Yeah, wouldn't, yeah, if you're, if you're going that route, because again, there are multiple routes you can take. So if you're, you know, the mural program has, you know, its own route you can take. This could be a different route, and we would, you know, point them in the right direction.
Okay.
And if it is a commercial property that's just cleaning up their property, then we would steer them towards the commercial beautification grant. This isn't a codes enforcement fix-up-your-issues grant.
And then on that visual you had, you had, um, it looked like some temporary, sort of temporary seating that was in a parking spot. It was kind of blue and, so that would be, what if people, what if a, a business purchased that? I mean, and, and so it's not temporary. Would that?
So, um, parklets, there's kind of two. You have parklets that are designed for public use, which is what we're talking about. So, you know, it is a space for everyone to use. The other type of parklet you often seen is a parklet that is a, um, a curb extension, which is designed for private use, and those then are owned and operated by the private business. This program is again for public enjoyment. So these would be things that are going to be, you know, welcoming for everybody to use. Um, but I mean, these could very much pop up, you know, very easily on the four hundred and five hundred block um, as, you know, just additional public spaces when you're not at a private, um, establishments, you know, tables and chairs.
Right.
So private businesses have to get a sidewalk cafe permit. So they would not, there wouldn't be a situation where a business could legally buy furniture and install it permanently in a public area.
Okay. And then I think, I love that you're targeting, you know, HOAs in the neighborhoods and employees and people who work downtown and children. What's the plan for really educating them and, you know, pulling them along and getting them to s- submit ideas with you all?
So we will market, once the program is up and running, we will, we will do a, a, a marketing campaign and get it out there and get this information into those community groups, um, and then, you know, into the, the office tenants that we have. Um, so there are, um, we will make sure that we're getting this information out there and letting people know that there is funding available to do this type of stuff.
And our city employees, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So yeah, again, it's, it's a very wide audience, um, and we're really, you know, excited to see who is, you know, the, I guess the thing with this program is it is providing an opportunity for people to do things that is outside of traditional events and festivals, which is often what people think about when they think of activations. So they, they're not, they don't happen as much. Also, these types of events don't generate income. They're not selling beer. They're not, they're not profit, I mean, they can be, but they're not, they're just, they require a little more assistance to get them up and running off the ground.
So this, this could be something like if the neighborhoods wanted to have a children's talent show and hold it in Station Square, and they needed to have tables and chairs, and if they wanted to buy some little mini trophies and things like that, would that, something like that fall in there?
Yeah, I mean, as long as they are doing something, you know, they are activating that space and transforming that space for a period of time.
And bringing non-traditional people into it.
Yeah.
What are non-traditional people?
Well, I mean, people that are organically downtown anyway. So if we're getting people from countryside and Skycrest and San Key into the downtown, like neighborhoods, like, you know, you don't see a lot of, I mean, that's what I meant, like.
Well, no, I didn't understand. That's why I'm asking for clarity.
Yeah, people who, we're trying to get a wider audience, right? People who don't normally come to downtown.
Any other questions? Motion?
I think that's you.
Four point three.
Uh, move to approve item four point three.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed unanimous, four point four. Thanks, Eric.
Approve work orders to Cardinal Inc. for post-active remediation monitoring of the former Car Pro facility at thirteen fifty-nine Cleveland Street in an amount not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for five years pursuant to requests for qualifications, twenty-six dash nineteen, engineer of record consulting services, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. And I'll invite up Joe DeCicco to present this item.
Good morning. I'm Joe DeCicco with Engineering Department. The Car Pro site previously operated as a, an auto repair and service facility dating back to about the nineteen fifties. During that time, the site had waste oil tanks, hydraulic lifts, uh, floor drains and sumps and service bays, uh, as would be expected for business of that nature. Site assessment for the property would be. Site assessment for the property began in about 2005 and by 2007, a groundwater contaminant plume had been identified. The plume was primarily TCE and it extended approximately 250 feet down gradient from the site. The Car Pro site had long been considered an impediment to the redevelopment of the East Gateway area. In 2010, the CRA purchased the property and entered into an interlocal agreement with the city to complete the environmental cleanup. The cleanup began in December of 2011 and included the injection of microbes and nutrients into the groundwater that were specifically designed to break down the TCE into innocuous daughter products. Since that time, the city has been performing semiannual sampling and, and reporting to the DEP. Over time, the levels of contamination have reduced, very close to the cleanup target levels. Based on the most recent test results, Cardinal has recommended continued sampling and FD, EP has agreed with their recommendations. Any questions?
Questions? Vice Mayor?
Now, once this was determined that it needed to continue, did this go out to, to bid?
Cardinal's an engineer of record.
Okay, okay, good. I mean, $30,000 a year for five years is pretty significant money to just test some stuff, I would think. But, if that's what this specialty calls for, I just want to make sure we're getting the best bang for the dollar.
We're, we're going to talk to Cardinal about maybe looking at some other strategies or maybe trying to speed it up too. But for right now, we need to continue to do the testing and some reporting.
Oh, yes, Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, I had expressed my concern to staff that, you know, this has been going on since 2011. And, and so I had asked how we can expedite this process. So we can redevelop this particular area. And so that is what, what we're talking about already.
Yeah, that's right.
But we actually got very close with the testing. We almost got to the point where we were going to scale it back to once a year. And then there was a rebound and it's kind of stalled. So now's the time to kind of take a look at that and maybe try and look at some different strategies or additional thoughts and recommendations.
So is this going to take it to a level that it is, okay, for commercial use or residential use? We know going back to Prospect Lake, for those of us who were here, there are certainly different standards. And that site took
Absolutely.
a very long time to get to a residential standard.
Right, it does. This would be, for commercial, I'd have to really talk to Cardinal and look at the data to get a better answer on whether they're not going to be used for residential. But I can get back to you on that.
Well, there may be a point of diminishing returns where it is not worthy of getting to a residential standard, especially if that's not what is anticipated to be there.
Really, but I'll, I'll talk to Cardinal and let you know what the numbers look like. I, I don't have them in front of me.
Do we know the total dollars now that have been spent on the site for remediation?
Um, no, I don't have that in front of me.
I'd just be curious.
I, I know we do know, but I just
I know we do know. If you could get that number.
Absolutely.
Um, it's beneficial going forward when we look at acquiring a site. We had the acquisition costs, I mean, I was here when we first did this. And it seems like we're wandering in the desert to get this done. You know, we're not 40 years yet, but, uh, I just want to know for future reference, if we want to go down these paths. No one else, no one else is going to do it, obviously. This is going to be a municipal purpose. But, uh, at least we ought to know what we're walking into when we buy these sites.
I will say with the, with the purchase of Idle Spur, we, next door to this, we now have a site that is large enough to have parking to support a commercial use, which was one of the challenges of this is a decent sized site, but if you really wanted to look at new construction, when I talked with different potential developers, you know, parking's going to, was, was an issue space for that. So I think, you know, we're not set on it meeting a residential standard at all. So as we look at it and look at the numbers, we can see what will get us most quickly to a commercial.
Do we know if anything has leached into the soil over on Idle Spur?
This was impact, this site impacted the Idle Spur. Yeah, I mean, the contaminant plume was quite large.
Okay. Councilmember Beckman?
Well, I had a question. I had reached out to Amanda on Friday. But I was thinking when we look at that piece of property and close to the Mercado area that's coming, would there be a possibility of some temporary use? You know, notwithstanding any contamination, but if we had raised garden beds or a couple of pickleball courts or basketball courts, something that's not going to cost us too much money, but that people could use. So I mean, I just think, rather than let it sit empty for another five years, how could it be activated for residents? I mean, it's just something to keep in mind, that's all. I mean, I don't want anybody to get contaminated for residential, but, you know, if it's above the ground.
We can put that to the DEP, they can definitely get approvals. Use, uh,
For those kinds of things.
institutional controls to keep, keep the property safe from any contaminant being introduced to the public. Like, I don't see why that wouldn't happen.
I, I would say that my experience in the past, though, I don't know the specifics. I haven't looked at the, all the documents yet. But a former gas station, very, very difficult to redevelop for residential. And I would be very careful based upon the information that's been provided today for any type of public use until we're able to figure out a, a permanent solution, whether we're going to cap it. So I think that there's, there's a expectation that we just need to be more safe.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
Move approval of gen item 4.4.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Directors' reports?
Just a few. We will have a lecture with artist Clyde Butcher at the Billheimer Capital Theater on March 30th in the evening, so invite you to all come to that. On April 8th will be the next 400 and 500 Cleveland Street block closure meeting to update the property owners and tenants on where we are with beautification efforts, as well as our first CRA quarterly meeting, where we're inviting any and all organizations involved in downtown to come and exchange information, share what they're working on, figure out ways that we can all work together. And then in May, you're going to be receiving some more information from us on an updated approach to special events and to housing as we've been working on some more longer-term solutions before the, the park opens. And then finally, just to let you know, so you can sleep better at night, we've met our state and county reports for, our requirements for reports. So our annual report and audit and all those kind of things. Just so you know, we're, we're taking care of that. And that is all I had today, except to say thank you to Councilmember Hamilton. You have been with me the entire time that I've been at the city and I just appreciate your support, especially during those rocky early years and perspective and of course, parenting advice. So, thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Councilmember Beckman?
Any update on the more decorative barricades? Are they, because I thought I saw somebody moving something around this morning when I drove by, but
I was by the engineering director to address.
Yes, good morning, Tara Kivitt Engineering. We should be starting that in about 30 days. What you see out, out there now is the Streets and Sidewalks Group with Parks and Recreation doing a repair to the Paver Crosswalk.
Well, the Paver Crosswalk at Ford Harrison in Cleveland was repaired and now it is already crumbling again between the 400 and 500 block on the south side.
They're working on it this morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's
What happened?
They were this morning. I'd have to look into that a little further. It could be some of the infrastructure there. Frequently, as you guys know, we've got big Ford Harrison corridor reconstruction project. The sewer lines are old in this part of downtown and sometimes they start taking in some of the groundwater and soils and so that causes some subsidence. It's also difficult for us to appropriately compact and stabilize those crosswalks when we remove the pavers without like redoing the entire section. So it's possible some of the past repairs were not comprehensive enough. But I, I don't know the backstory, I'll look into that.
All right. Councilmember Auburn?
Yeah, so I was coming here this morning and I waited for the red light at Osceola in Cleveland and I'm wondering why they have that working there.
It's, it should be on just a recall for pedestrians only. So if there was not a pedestrian looking to cross, because of course you still have pedestrians going east-west, it, it shouldn't have been. So let me look into that also.
I think, I think it ought to be on. What I've been seeing is people literally just, I mean, from Osceola to Pierce, they are flying.
Oh, the
And I think having the light there is
Maybe through spring
beneficial.
Right, that, that could have been. I know they did some counts and even some speed studies in that area. We're looking at some of the options resulting from meeting with the downtown merchants a month ago that Amanda and Eric had talked about. So I doubtfully will remove, obviously, the signals in total because we want flexibility to bring that back, but we can look at the timing.
Sure. Anything else? All right, we will adjourn the CRA and we will convene the work session in 19 minutes.
It depends when the neighborhoods have scheduled the different parties. Some of them do it late in the afternoon, some don't. Good morning, everybody. We will call the March 14th, 2022 council work session to order. We're going to start off with budget item 2.1.
Amend the city's fiscal year 2021-22 operating and capital improvement budgets at first quarter.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Kailene Castle Budget Officer. This is the first quarter budget review for the fiscal year 21-22 budget. This report reflects three months of activity, October through December, and also all council action to date. In the general fund, revenues and expenditures are increased by $4,466. This increase is primarily related to council-approved appropriations of general fund reserves, which total $3,741,980. This includes $400,000 to fund the Sailing Center Dock Replacement Project, $241,980 to fund the cultural assessment and human resources, $300,000 for green print implementation, and $2,800,000 for the Fire Station 46 Replacement Project. Other general fund amendments include an increase of $115,000 to fund the new CRA Assistant Director position, which is offset by revenues transferred from the CRA, an increase of $139,700 in the city attorney's office to fund retirement leave payouts and personnel changes, and an increase of $3,786 for the departments that received safety awards, which have offsetting revenues recognized from the central insurance fund. Adjusted for all items listed in this report, general fund reserves are approximately 63.9 million, or 38.8% of the current year's general fund budget. This exceeds our minimum reserve requirement by $49.9 million at first quarter. There are no significant amendments being made to any other city operating fund at first quarter. In the capital improvement fund, a net decrease of $26,403,885 is reflected at first quarter. The following amendments represent increases to capital funds for actions previously approved by the council. This includes an increase of $300,000 in general fund revenues for the green print implementation project, an increase of $665,000 in lease purchase finance revenues in the P-25 radio equipment and infrastructure project, an increase of $2,800,000 in general fund reserves, $1,134,000 in county fire tax revenues, and $44,000 in stormwater revenue for the Fire Station 46 Beach Project, an increase of $427,795 in CRA revenues for the Mercado Downtown Gateway Project, an increase of $786,000 in stormwater revenues, which is transferred to the Deloro Park renovation project, and an increase of $400,000 in general fund revenues for the Sailing Center Dock Replacement Project. Other significant amendments to capital projects in this report include decreases, which total $32,961,600 to various water and sewer projects to remove future bond fund funding amounts that were budgeted in the current year. This reduction is being made to align the project funding with the finalized rate study. In the special program fund, an increase of $3,189,270 is reflected at first quarter. Significant amendments include $92,448 in public safety grant revenues for investigative cost recovery, federal forfeiture sharing, and police body cameras, $403,064 from the Pinellas County School Board to fund the school resource officer's 2021-22 contract, and some extra duty reimbursement as a part of that total. Transfers of general fund revenues from the Police Department of $167,750 to account for overtime at special events, and $53,314 is being transferred to the body camera project, $32,000 to establish new programs to account for police overtime reimbursements from various law enforcement agencies, $411,996 in FEMA reimbursements were recognized for Hurricane Irma over the last quarter, $507,355 in contractual service revenue for police extra duty, $394,095 from the Juvenile Welfare Board for the 2021-22 summer and after-school programs, $3,275 in donation revenues, which support police and library programs, $493,171 in community development block grant program income is recognized, $7,200 in foreclosure registry fees have been collected over the last quarter, $244,678 in fines and court proceeds are recognized for public safety programs, the lean foreclosure program, and the tree replacement program, $14,108 in special events revenues, $6,458 in interest earnings recognized from the prior year, and $357,857 has transferred between existing police programs. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Ms. Castle? Councilmember Beckman.
I just have one. Thank you for that report, and I'm not sure you can answer this one, but I'm happy to see that we have $300,000 allocated for startup of green print and implementation of it. I was just wondering if somebody could articulate how that $300,000 is being spent, or how we came up with that amount, and what we're thinking we're going to spend it on.
That's actually from an agenda item that you approved a couple meetings ago for the synergistic contract.
Oh, okay, that's what it is.
Yeah. We established that project last year, I think, third quarter with some funding, but this is specifically for synergistic.
Okay. I didn't know if it was for community education or things like that. It's simply synergistics?
Yeah.
Other questions?
Well...
Go ahead.
No, no, this is fine. As we look at the next budget, as we look at our budget coming forward, then that's where I'll need to advocate for more funding to implement green print, because this is... this works with green print, with synergistics, but as far as, like I said, education outreach...
We have some operating dollars. I don't remember what the exact amount is in the city manager's office for Sheridan to do some of the programming. She also has a capital fund, which I believe has about $300,000 in it currently, part of which is being used for the solar study, for the roof study, and that is added to every year. I'm not sure what the exact amount is, but we replenish that every year.
Yeah, there was $320,000. This is an increase of 300 for a total in the project of $620,000 now.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Have we been... Hurricane Irma was in September of 2017. How much longer are we going to be getting reimbursements? Are we close to closing that out?
I think we are close, but there is still some additional...
I know Jevon's not here, but...
There's still some money that has been allocated to us that we have yet to receive, but I don't think it's all that far off.
And people say the wheels of government work slowly. Okay, any other questions? We'll talk about that further on Thursday. 3.1.
Approve settlement of general liability claim to Linda Damski.
Good morning, Rick Osorio Risk Manager. Ms. Linda Damski is a resident, participated regularly in playing pickleball at the North Greenwood Recreational Center on January 28th, 2019. While playing at the center, she slipped and fell in a puddle of water on the court, injuring her left knee. As a result of this injury, Ms. Damski incurred almost $30,000 in medical expenses, which include the cost of surgery for her left knee, which she underwent in February 2019. Mediation was held on January 24th, 2022, which resulted in a settlement of $57,500 contingent on council approval. The Risk Management Division, Claims Committee, and the City Assistant Attorney recommend approval of this settlement.
Councilmember Beckman.
So, I just wanted... I had two little questions.
Bless you.
So she had medical bills of $30,000? So is the other $27,500 for attorney fees?
Attorney fees and other associated expenses with the claim, but yet basically it's mostly for attorney fees. And a portion of that, of course, you know, of the settlement goes to her.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, do we know why there was a puddle on the court? What happened?
The roof at that center has had issues. We are currently addressing it, but it has had a history of leakages, so that's the reason she fell.
Okay. That was all. Thank you.
Sure.
Consent?
Yes.
3.2.
Approve the purchase of access property insurance.
We've all had one-on-ones on this. Mr. Osorio?
Yes. I'm sorry for the lengthy reading.
Not at all. It's a big number.
Yes. The Risk Management Division requested Arthur J. Gallagher and Company to obtain quotes for property policies, which are expiring April 1st, 2022. After review of their quotes, and since the current coverage with Brookshire Hathaway and additional subcarriers has a favorable three-year rate guarantee, which ends this April, we recommend renewing with Brookshire and the subcarriers for named Windstorm and all other perils for a renewal premium of $2,951,063. This renewal has no changes to our current coverages. The other policy that we're renewing is the boiler machinery coverage with Travelers, which will also remain at $200 million coverage, and that is not a change, with an increase of premium of 6.8% for a total of $80,324. City currently has bridges insured with Zurich Insurance Company, San Key Bridge, Manta Lee Channel Pedestrian Bridge, and the McMullen Booth Pedestrian Overpass. This program was placed in 2019 and incorporated a three-year rate guarantee, which expires also in April. Unfortunately, we were unable to obtain another multi-year agreement with Zurich. Thus, our renewal premium with Zurich will be $95,679, which is an increase of 62.5, primarily due to the rising values of those bridges. Aside from this increase, this policy will now include a flood deductible of 5% of the total covered value of a loss, subject to $100,000 minimum, and a named storm deductible of 5% of the total covered value of a loss, with a minimum of $500,000. They are also including an annual aggregate limit for the perils of earthquake, flood, and named storm of $50 million each. Our current coverage for terrorism, property liability, coverage remains unchanged, with a requested renewal premium of $23,100, as does our nuclear, biological, chemical, and radioactive terrorism coverage for a premium of $25,270. Total premiums for this renewal are estimated to be $3,175,0436, which represent an increase of 15% in premium and less than 1% in rate from last year. Staff recommends adding a contingency to a not exceed amount of $3,220,000. Risk management believes these recommended coverages will continue to cover the city's property risks at levels and rates which represent a reasonable insurance program for the city. The Risk Management Division is respectfully requesting approval of the renewal of these policies. Any questions? I'll take any questions.
Thank you for getting those answers that I had to the questions after our one-on-one. Any questions? Consent?
Yes.
3.3.
Ratify confirmed payments of Thornton Tomasetti, Inc., and Sable Engineering for Engineering Consulting Services.
On Monday, December 20th, 2021, a stairwell in parking garage, in a parking garage owned by Plymouth Plaza LLC, collapsed, trapping a construction worker. Sable Engineering was initially called out by the technical rescue team, which responded to assess the situation, to make sure it was safe to get him. City emergency responders and enlisted Thornton Tomasetti Incorporated, an engineering consulting firm, to assist with the recovery of the deceased worker from the rubble. Risk management is respectfully requesting approval of the payment of $143,925 to Thornton Tomasetti, Inc., and $1,886.91 to Sable Engineering. Risk management recommends the use of central insurance fund reserves for these expenditures, and is currently pursuing the recovery of these monies via claim file with the property owner of Plymouth Plaza LLC.
Well, this was a tragedy, and I want to thank all of our first responders for the way that they dealt with this.
Yes.
We also continue to keep that family in our prayers. Any questions? Consent?
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. 4.1.
Approve first amendment to agreement for metered parking between Pinellas County and the city of Clearwater.
Good morning, city council members. Mr. Mayor, Jeremy Als House, Parking Manager for the city. The item for you is an amendment to a 2011 agreement with the Pinellas County to provide metered parking on specific county lots on their behalf, but the phasing out of our single-spaced meters, we're proposing to place four floorboard parking kiosks on their lots. The agreement will allow us to collect 100% of the proceeds from those meters until they are paid for, at which time it will revert to the 60-40 split that it currently has. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Consent?
Yes.
4.2.
Approve a construction contract to Resticon Corporation of Tampa, Florida, for the municipal parking garage rehabilitation upgrade.
Thank you. Once again, Jeremy Als House, City's Parking Manager. The item for you is a construction contract for Resticon Corporation to complete a renovation of the MSB employee parking garage, with upgrades for LED lighting, plus electrical work to make the garage solar-ready and EV charging station-ready. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, are we... My understanding is, this parking garage, when it was originally built, was designed to be able to add, I know at least one level, I'm pretty sure one level, if not two more levels of parking to it. Given the construction of the new city hall across the street in that location, how does this project work with our future need, possibly needing to add a level to this garage?
So, to that end, what I've done so far is, we've been doing cursory counts, or summary counts, of the garage currently, and on a daily basis, we have between 100 and 150 spaces available in that garage currently. I've already asked city administration what they think that the demand, increased demand might be on that garage if we were to build city hall next to the MSB. I was told around 60. So, we should have enough capacity as it is. I have not been able to confirm that the garage was built with the ability to add another level onto it, but at this point, it doesn't seem that that would be necessary at this time.
Well, I would, I mean, I would recommend that we make sure that that is the case before we spin this. But I'm not saying this project's not necessary, but I would say, make sure that, you know, don't do this project, then all of a sudden turn around and say, "Okay, now we're going to add it." And a lot of the work that they're going to do here is going to get tore up, beat up, and everything else. So, I would, I would recommend that the information gathering should be done to determine it before, before we take this step, and make sure it is exactly what we want.
And if I could, to that point, this is, it's a restoration project, it's to take care of the sealants and the joints and that kind of stuff, so this work needs to be done. Regardless, it's not going to stop the ability to add a level onto the top, if that needs to be, and the lighting project, we'll just have to add more lights later on. We won't be undoing anything to add another level, that this project is taken care of. This is stuff that has to be done, routine, regular maintenance that needs to be done, the majority of it.
Councilmember Beckman.
I thought this was fantastic news. I looked online this weekend to find like a Earth Day or environmental little flag to wave when we do EV things on the agenda, but, so you're, you're getting these, as you rehab it, you're getting it ready for EV charging stations. How many are you anticipating to put in there, planning for?
Well, we're working with Sustainability Coordinator on that. They do have a number. I think initially, I think our plan is to put in two double units on the first level and Level 3, so that would handle eight, and then, of course, it would be added on to from there. So, there's a, there's a number, one out of every 10 vehicles or something like that is recommended, but I, Sheridan's the one to ask to be specific, but we're getting ready to do all that.
Okay, great. Good to know. Thank you.
This is $3,965 per space. Pretty significant expenditure. Are we doing maintenance frequently enough to avoid a ticket like this, or is this just part and parcel of owning a parking garage, and you go so many years, and then you have to spend this kind of money for maintenance?
It's a, it's a little bit of a mixed bag, Mr. Mayor. It's all that. I mean, it's, I have worked with our consultant to have all of our garages on a routine schedule, where they'll be addressed every four years, minimum. This garage hasn't been addressed, it's been more than four years, so there is a little bit of that. There's also the upgrades, the one-time, you know, EV, getting, getting ready for EV, getting ready for solar.
Yeah, aside from that, I'm talking about just the maintenance, because Garden Street Garage, for instance, had cement falling from the ceiling for years and wasn't addressed, and then we went through that rehab. I don't want to get to that point. I don't wait for things to fall apart at my house before we do maintenance. The minute we see something, we fix it, so that it doesn't exacerbate bigger problems. I just want to make sure we're keeping up, and I know you're relatively new to this position, but it's still a big number. I bet when that garage was built, this is not much more, probably the same price per space at the time of construction.
Yes, sir. It is a big number, and yet the other part of the equation is, everything's more expensive right now with supply chain issues and that kind of stuff. So, it's, it's, like I said, it's a mixed bag, everything's making the prices more expensive, but we, like I said, I do have a more robust and routine maintenance plan going forward for our garages. They'll be addressed at minimum every four years, or if we see a problem, the problem will be addressed.
What is our current reserve in the parking fund?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, sir.
Can you give me that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Please. All right. Anything else? Councilmember Beckman?
Yeah, I have a follow-up. Is it a staffing challenge to get people in the parking department to go out and do an inspection, like, twice a year? I mean, is it, is, does it come down to staffing, that you don't have the staff to do visual inspections?
No, I think, a lot of looking at parking garages, it's a little bit of a specialty. It almost requires an engineer for the, for the more advanced stuff. I mean, obviously, we get reports, somebody sees a crack, somebody sees a piece of spalled concrete laying on the floor, they're really quick to report that, so that's, that's not the issue. It isn't a employee garage, so it doesn't matter if they're from parking or not. Anybody working at the MSB, they see a problem, something fell near their car, you know, in the stairwell, they're going to report it. So, I wouldn't say that it's that. It's just getting an engineer in there to look at it, draw up the specs of how to fix it properly and that kind of stuff. It just takes time.
Thanks.
Mr. Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. As these are really what we're talking about, are operational issues, we are going to do an enhanced inspection of all of our physical assets to just have a understanding of where we are, and then, of course, put those assets on a routine inspection and repair. You allow a parking garage to go for many years, and it's so much more expensive, so that is, but it's not just parking garages, it's...
Everything.
Everything, so...
An ounce of prevention. Any other questions? Consent?
Yeah.
This can go on consent, it can't. I will have to recuse myself, so I'm going to let the Vice Mayor handle this item.
Accept a temporary easement from Crum Properties LLC to the city for ingress egress access to certain real property owned by Crum located at 100 South Missouri Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. City council had previously approved a partial ground penetrating radar survey of the subject property at 100 South Missouri Avenue to determine whether burial remains from the former St. Matthew's Baptist Church Cemetery had been relocated. In early 2020, a partial GPR survey indicated that intact burials might be present on the property. City staff contracted with Cardno to complete an archaeological excavation and ground truthing of the former cemetery. That excavation confirmed the presence of active burials on the property. Cardno then proposed completing an expanded GPR survey of the property to determine cemetery boundaries. This temporary easement will allow the city ingress egress access to the property and allow Cardno, as the city's consultant, to perform a GPR survey on the property. Staff recommends approval of the temporary easement.
Any questions of staff?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. Ms. Mahoney from my office had been asking, when it comes to easements that we are accepting, to see if we could no longer do it by resolution, but instead, simply by consent. That is something that can help expedite meetings without sacrificing any input from council or things like that. I've advised Ms. Mahoney that I'm comfortable with that. There is no legal requirement, and in fact, Ms. Mahoney advised that years earlier, it had been the practice for apparently quite some time, that the acceptance of easement was done on consent agenda with everything else, and that the shift toward doing it by resolution was actually only about five years ago. I've looked at that issue extensively, Ms. Mahoney's looked at it, so I don't have a problem putting these on consent. I do want to emphasize that acceptance of an easement is very different from vacating an easement or vacating a public right of way. If we're vacating an easement or vacating a public right of way, that has to be done by ordinance, but I just wanted to let council know that I'm totally comfortable with shifting these acceptances of easements over to consent items. So, council may see a little bit of a transition there as we go to that.
Okay. Any questions, council? Does this, with your conflict, this cannot go on consent?
Correct.
Okay. This does not go on consent. Thank you.
4.4.
Accept a utility easement from Good Goat LLC on real property located on a portion of land lying in the southwest, one quarter of the northeast, one quarter of Section 17, Township 29, south, range 16 east, Pinellas County.
Morning again, Suzanne Kramer, Real Estate Services. I would like to point out that this resolution and the item immediately after it are both regarding the same parcel. So, the purpose of this resolution is to accept a utility easement from Good Goat LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city utility facilities at 101 Creative Way. It's a commercial site. The city engineering department recommends acceptance of this easement.
Questions? Councilmember Beckman?
I just had a question. I like the name of this business, so I Googled it up. I can't figure out what they do. Do you know what Good Goat does?
That's their LLC name, their creative construction.
Okay.
Creative contractors.
Creative contract, yes, thank you.
Who are swapping property with.
Thanks.
But, any other questions? 4.5.
Accept a drainage easement from Good Goat LLC for the same property.
Yes, the purpose of this resolution is to accept a drainage easement from Good Goat LLC for construction, installation, and maintenance of city drainage facilities on real property located at 101 Creative Way. It's a commercial site, and the city engineering department recommends acceptance of this easement.
Questions? Thank you. 5.1.
Approve the annexation initial future land use MAP designation of residential low and initial zoning allowance designation of low and medium density residential for 2306 and 2322 Anna Avenue.
Thank you, Cobb, Rillington Planning and Development. This item contains two voluntary annexation petitions totaling 0.458 acres of property, consisting of two parts of the land, but occupied by detached dwellings. The applicants are requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste servers from the city, and the applicants are aware that the sewer impact and settlement fees must be paid in full prior to connection and of the additional costs to connect, and solid waste will be provided upon annexation.
5.2.
Approve the historic designation for 900 North Fort Harrison Avenue.
Good morning, Dillon, Prins Planning and Development. This local historic designation application involves the former North Ward Elementary School located at 900 North Fort Harrison Avenue, which was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in September of 2021. The property is city-owned, 1.989 acres in area, includes a total of five structures, with two of them being historically contributing. These include the 1915 schoolhouse in its entirety, as well as the small dome structure near the rear of the property constructed around 1965. The other structures on the site... The other structures on the site are considered non-contributing and therefore would not be protected by a local historic designation. The property meets two of the four criteria which are used to determine historic significance outlined in the Community Development Code, receiving a classification of notable. The local historic designation would exempt the historically contributing buildings from design standards outlined in the downtown zoning district that would impact their ability to retain historic integrity. Designating the North Ward Elementary School locally will ensure that any future improvements will maintain the historic integrity of the building because there's a certificate of appropriateness that is required in order to materially alter the building, erect a new building on the property, or demolish or relocate the building. Planning and Development staff recommends approval for the local historic designation of the North Ward School. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Beckman?
I think this is exciting. I think there's such great possibilities with this North Ward School. I was a little concerned about ADA requirements for inside. And so when I read about historic designation, it just said to the greatest extent possible, they must be ADA compliant, but it won't be a firm requirement. And then I just wanted to know, what are the next steps in activating this location? Does anybody want to comment on what we're going to?
Not sure on that.
Okay.
Good morning. Gina Clayton, Planning and Development. We are going to be issuing RFP for the activation and renovation of the building. We've had a little bit of work done, an opinion on the market, so that can help us craft that RFP. And as soon as we get that done and the city manager is good with it, then we'll move forward with issuing that.
Are we going to have any resident engagement about, you know, what they might, what people who live around there might envision or think about what we could do with North Ward School?
Um, I'm not sure. We really did a lot of that when we did the North Marina Area Master Plan and also the Downtown Plan as well. So, you know, I think that's something we'll discuss with the city manager, determine if we really need to do that since we've had some significant engagement in the past.
Okay. And it is included in the, our soon-to-be CRA for the North Greenwood? Okay. So maybe even asking people at the April CRA meeting, maybe if they had ideas or?
I, I don't know exactly what the program is going to look like. I think it'll be a meeting structured on talking about opportunities now, so it may be.
Not the right time?
It may be the right time. We'll see.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? As far as asking a specific group, I want this to be more regional in nature. I don't think that this is exclusively a, you know, just for the new CRA area. This is an asset for the entire community. And I think limiting it to a small group is an injustice to getting a more broad opinion of what it should be. And ultimately, we also have to make certain that whoever's interested in responding to the RFP, they're going to somewhat determine what the market is going to bear for something like this unless we want to go it alone, which is not what I believe we ought to do with this site. Do you have any opinions on that, Mr. Manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor. We have been meeting with various interested businesses that have a strong interest in relocating to this site. I do believe this is a public-private partnership opportunity. And so hence the reason why we're going out with the RFP. But we will contribute significantly in terms of the city will contribute significantly to what we hope will be the final resolution of, of tenants and so forth at the location.
Very good. It's great to preserve these wonderful buildings. We've done it with South Ward and the Capitol Theater and a few others. It's, it's really important. Item five point three.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low medium density residential district for 1819 Diane Drive.
Thank you. Cobb, Rillington Planning and Development. So this item contains two voluntary annexation petitions totaling 1.483 acres of property consisting of two parcels of land, one occupied by detached dwelling and the other occupied by multiple attached dwellings, six duplexes for 12 units total. The applicants are requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicants have paid the required sewer impact and assessment fees in full and have been connected to the city sewer system. And solid waste will be provided upon annexation.
Questions? Councilmember Beckman?
Yeah. So as I read this one, I was excited because it looks like we have, you know, with this agenda item, we have more variety of housing coming into the city. So six duplexes and one single-family home. And I was just wondering, do we ever check to see if, and this is not, I don't know anything about, you know, the property owners, but do we check that they are good landlords? That, that they don't have code violations and things like that as we annex them in?
As we annex in, our code team does go out and notify us of any potential code violations. And then we do let the owners know. But typically, they're just minor things, you know, cars being parked on the, on the grass or just some property maintenance issues like painting or maybe a broken window or two, nothing too severe. We don't get into actual ownership, I don't believe.
Okay. And we don't do like even a legal check to see if they're good actors as far as they are good landlords? And I mean, because do we want to be annexing in people that are slum lords?
I can't speak to the legal yet. I defer to Ms. Margolis.
Yes, please.
So our current annexation ordinance gives council some guidance as to what factors can be, in effect, must be considered when council is considering annexation. Those factors include, for example, whether the annexation will be consistent with our Community Development Code. And so if council identifies a particular annexation where the annexation would not seem to comply with our Community Development Code, then council could potentially deny that annexation. I certainly agree with staff that the vast majority of these cases are transient violations that are relatively minor. My advice to council would, would not be necessarily to hold back annexation based on a relatively minor or transient violation. However, if there's something more serious, something long-term, something permanent, that would be potentially a basis to deny an annexation. As another example, council can consider, and in fact must consider, under the code, whether the annexation is consistent with our comprehensive plan. And that's, guides everything else. And so if council identifies particular aspects of our comprehensive plan that give you concern about whether an annexation actually really is consistent with our comprehensive plan, then that too would be a valid basis to either decline annexation or require some changes prior to annexation. So those would be the examples. But at least with our current ordinance, there are specific factors to consider as to whether, whether or not annexation should be granted. It just so happens that most of them are routine. Because our city is built out, very different from where I came from. In Orlando, there's thousands and thousands of acres of unincorporated Orange County. So the city has tons of room for annexation, and most of these annexations become more complicated, I would say. But with these, most of them are just single-family homes, one-off parcels, things like that.
But it sounds like these are on septic.
They were on septic, yes.
So, I mean, that's, if nothing else, a huge incentive for us to annex these parcels in because we want them off of septic. So they're already getting our water, but not our sewer yet.
Uh, these properties, and specifically, are connected now to the city sewer.
They are now.
Yes, they are now.
Councilmember Albrecht?
And the county has a program to help with the sewer, I mean, to get people off the septic into the sewer, right?
I'm not sure what the county has in terms of programs like that. I know we've, the city has done the sewer expansion projects recently. I believe this area was a previous sewer expansion project, yeah, a number of years ago. So, yeah, septic tanks are failing, and that's why they're connected to this one.
Yeah, because I think they're, I mean, that's their goal too, is to get off the septic, you know, with all the things coming down from the government on, you know, on that and our water supply and so forth, so.
Any other questions? For five point four.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of Industrial General and initial zoning atlas designation of Industrial Research and Technology District for 1944 Calmet Street, Suite B.
Thank you. So this, and voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.806 acre property consisting of one parcel of land currently occupied by a warehouse and office. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicant has paid the required sewer impact and assessment fees in full and is aware of additional costs to extend to the city sewer system. And again, solid waste will be provided upon annexation.
Questions? Vice Mayor? I'm looking, as I look at the map, I, I see the building that, are we actually annexing the actual street portion of Calumet at that point too, or?
Yes, we are actually going to be annexing in .679 acres of that certain Calumet Street.
Thought the street already was, but okay. All right. No problem. Councilmember Beckman?
That was kind of my question as well. What with certain Calumet Street right-of-way annexation, and why is, is that for to get city services? I mean, like, why, why, why that phrase there?
Our engineering department, they determine if the annexation or the right-of-way should be annexed. I don't know if there's anyone here who'd be able to speak to that specifically.
Um, as we annex unincorporated area, the right-of-way is also an unincorporated area. And since it's within our planning jurisdiction, we take on responsibility for maintenance for those streets and utilities. So it's very typical. You've seen lots of annexations where we're annexing a portion of the right-of-way in vicinity of the actual property.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Five point five.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low medium density residential district for 2635 Woodring Drive.
Thank you. This voluntary annexation petition involves 0.201 acre property consisting of one parcel of land occupied by a new detached dwelling which is currently under construction. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicant has paid the required impact and assessment fees in full and is aware of the additional cost to extend to the city sewer. Due to the ongoing construction within the county, this case will have its second and final hearing scheduled after a set of occupancy has been issued.
Questions? Five point six.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential urban and initial zoning atlas designation of low medium density residential district for an unaddressed parcel on the road known as the Mall.
Dillon Prince, Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.114 acre property, a property consisting of one parcel of vacant land. The applicants have indicated future plans to construct a detached dwelling on the property, although no plans have been submitted at this time. Annexation is being requested, so at the time of construction, the property will be eligible to receive potable water, sanitary sewer, and solid waste from the city. The applicants are aware that the city sewer impact and assessment fees must be paid in full prior to connection and of the additional cost to extend city sewer service to this property.
Any questions? Five point seven.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low medium density residential district for 1930 Ashland Drive.
Thank you. Cobb, Rillington Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves a .188 acre property consisting of one parcel of land occupied by detached dwelling. Applicants requesting annexation in order to receive sanitary sewer and solid waste service from the city. The applicant is aware that the sewer impact and assessment fees must be paid in full prior to connection and of the additional cost to connect to the city sewer system. And solid waste will be provided upon annexation.
Questions? All right, five point eight.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential urban and initial zoning atlas designation of low medium density residential district for 3065 Cleveland Street.
Thank you. This voluntary annexation petition involves a .15 acre property consisting of one parcel of land which is currently vacant. The applicant is requesting annexation to incorporate the property into the overall campus of the Calvary Church for future parking use.
And just for the record, I've talked to our city attorney. I have no financial interest in this property. I'm not on any of the boards of the church, but I have been a member there for 43 years. But I do not and cannot recuse myself. Any questions? All right, five point nine.
Continue to April 7, 2022, the annexation of future land use map designation of US 19 Neighborhood Center and the initial zoning atlas designation of US 19 for two unaddressed parcels along US Highway 19 North. And council members, I will let the city attorney explain further if needed, but I believe the applicant is needing another agreement to be included and was not completed prior to today's meeting.
Mr. Margolis? So do we need to just continue this Thursday?
That would seem to be appropriate.
Yes. And that's because the notice and the advertisement has already taken place.
Okay. Six point one.
Accept Federal Emergency Management Agency for Division of Emergency Management Hazard Mitigation Grant Program award in the amounts of $221,285.25 with a required local match of
Good morning, Council. Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. The item before you today is for the approval of the acceptance of a FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant for the purchase of two mobile generators to be used at the city's water reclamation facilities. The grant is for the amount of $221,285.25 with a city match of $73,761.75. Work must be completed by January 31st, 2024. I'm hap, I'm asking for your approval to accept the grant and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gardner? Consent? Yes, sir. Any questions on second reading? Seven point one. Eight point one. Mr. Jennings?
Um, Mayor and City Council, I have a few items I wanted to discuss, but the, I had asked Planning Director Clayton, in meeting with her last week, I was made aware of a couple of developments that are of great concern. And I had asked her if she would come today to brief the council on these projects. And specifically, the fact that we do not have anything currently that we, in terms of what you could do, what the tools you could use to make any changes or alterations at this point. So I have concerned, concerns, and I think we all should be concerned about what's being proposed. So if it's okay.
Can you just speak to why you're concerned?
Well, I, to me, this is nothing more than a very large Airbnb, what I would consider to be party houses. The way they're designed, each unit has its own pool, six to eight bedrooms per unit. And so to me, this is, having dealt with the Airbnb phenomenon on many occasions, and the impact it has in, in neighborhood areas, I think that all of us need to take a closer look at what is being proposed.
Ms. Clayton?
Of course, I'll need Joelle to help me get this PowerPoint up. I thought it would be easier to walk you through the projects with the PowerPoint, so I apologize. We didn't have time to get that together before her agenda was done. Sorry. Thank you. All right. As the, the city manager said, we are starting to see what I would consider a new type of tourist product on the beach. And the developments that we have seen, we've had two application, and they've been submitted as what we call resort attached dwellings, which was a use that we had established back in 2009. And the intent of that use was to allow condominium developments to be rented out in any way. So when an owner bought into it, they knew if they could live there full-time, which they could, or they could rent it out daily, weekly. Because we had had some condominium developments that were developed with full-time residents, and later people wanted to rent them out. So we tried to create this use. So residential, excuse me, resort detached dwelling is a residential use, and it's allowed to have residential density. We've had two projects submitted, and I would characterize We've had two projects submitted, and I would characterize these projects really as large vacation homes with a very small attachment to skirt the requirement of having a true common wall connection. Technically, they meet it, but I don't think it was as we had originally attended. These projects have six to eight bedrooms, as the manager said, and there's a swimming pool for each individual unit. While these units are, these developments are providing more than the required parking of one and a half spaces per unit, I'm not sure it's really sufficient to accommodate the traffic that may accommodate these proposals. So what I'd like to do is show you the two that we have that have been through the DRC process, and that I'm really at the point where I'm probably going to have to approve them because they do meet the requirement. So this first project is located at 12 Idlewild Road, and it's almost a half an acre in size. The site permits 14 resort attached dwelling units or 23 hotel units, and what is proposed is three units. Altogether, on the site of these three units, there'll be 22 bedrooms. They'll have 11 parking spaces, which is more than the five that is required. And just for some context, the 23-unit hotel on the site would require, would require 28 spaces. This is the site plan, it is a little difficult to read. So I'm going to show you the landscaping plan here, where you can see where the cars will be parked, and that they have individual swimming pools. The way the project is created, there's three units. There's the ground floor, which really shouldn't have anything but parking on it. The next floor has three bedrooms, and then the top floor is all like four bedrooms. One unit has an additional unit as well. These are the elevations from the south. I don't know why they have them on the same sheet, it's the same view.
So are the cars we're seeing parked, are they in a garage, or is there driveway space as well?
There's a garage, but the way they're oriented, if you park a car in the driveway, you're likely not to be able to get some of the cars out. Let's see. So it depends. You know, if you park a car here, you're not going to be able to get the cars out. So it's not really like they have efficient stacking that they can use without having to shuffle cars around to get in and out. So this is the elevation. One unit has an additional bedroom on the top floor, so it's a little bit higher. I mean, I think the good thing about the unit is that it's only 44 feet above base design flood elevation, whereas the code would allow it up to 65. So this is the next site, which is on the corner of Somerset and Mandalay. And this project includes two duplexes, a total of four units, where 12 residential units would be allowed and 20 hotel units. This project has a total of 24 bedrooms, there are six bedrooms in each unit. Six parking spaces would be required by code, eight are being provided. I do think that inside the garages, there may be space to stack cars, but those are not considered legal parking spaces. And again, just for context, a 20-unit hotel would require 24 parking spaces. So this is the site plan, as you can see, each unit has its own swimming pool. And the garages are oriented in a way, if you park out on the driveway, you're going to block cars getting in and out of the garages. These are the elevations, and I think in this project, you can really see that they are single-family homes with this connection in between that is, I think there might be a small bathroom, but on the backside, that, under the roof space, it's actually an open space. So it's more of like kind of a lanai. So I think some of the issues that I'm seeing with this is that, because there's no other way to really address the unit, they're using RAD, and it's really a single-family vacation home, from what I can tell. There is a small number of units, but with the bedroom counts as high as they are, it's really more consistent with what number of rooms you might get with a hotel project. I think the code doesn't address the parking needs of this type of use. It's insufficient based on the bedrooms. And I don't believe that multiple pools, a pool for every unit is what was contemplated in the current residential, I mean, excuse me, resort attached dwellings. And, you know, I think there's a positive that the use, there's fewer units and the building height is lower. But also just due to the magnitude and size of these units, I think the one on Somerset, they're like 3,500 square feet units. You know, they are creating a larger mass. I think that there may be some need for some code requirements. I don't have obviously any recommendations for you today, but I think there's some, some questions that we want to consider, and I'm not, I don't think this is the exhaustive list, but just some of the things we might want to think about is, really, what is this use? Is it really a vacation home, or is it a resort attached dwelling as intended by the code that was adopted in 2009? If we have this type of use, really, what is the appropriate amount of parking? And at what point do the number of bedrooms become so excessive that we're really exceeding the intended residential density? Another question I would have is, you know, should each individual unit of an attached dwelling project have a swimming pool? And, you know, another thing to think about, we don't allow single-family homes in the tourist district. If we think this is a good use, because it does serve a segment of the population that likes to travel in large groups with families or whatever, would it be appropriate to have a vacation home as a use in the tourist district? If not in the entire tourist district, but maybe in Old Florida, where that type of development and style of development might be more compatible with the area in Old Florida particularly? And, you know, with appropriate parking, do you think that this would be something that is appropriate? So we have lots of questions, and as the city manager said, some concerns, which I think really boil down to that resort attached dwelling provisions don't really line up with what we're seeing, and we probably need to make some adjustments.
So what I'm hearing is that these projects right now do meet our criteria, and you're most likely going to have to approve them, but the trend is an issue that we need to address. Mr. Margolis, doing that through amendments, do you feel comfortable that we can get there without it taking?
Without it taking what?
By changing the zoning.
Oh, oh, I thought you meant without taking it out of time.
No, 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 no.
No, I think by the time we did all this, theoretically, we could initiate that process now and then under the pending ordinance doctrine, try to tell the current applicants that we have a pending ordinance, but it would be a very heavy lift, given that they have already invested the time in applying for this. And given, given the way our vested rights ordinance is structured, I would be very reluctant to try to make code changes now that would affect these projects. But I do agree completely with Ms. Clayton that the type of uses that we're now seeing coming in are probably not always contemplated as a, you know, resort attached dwelling. So I do think for future projects, council should consider potential code amendments.
On Brightwater and Bayside, we have some units that have a lot of bedrooms. I don't know that they have as many as eight. But is the difference that they share pools, or what's the difference?
I'm not aware of a project on Brightwater that has this number of bedrooms. I, maybe I'm just.
I thought on Brightwater and Bayside, there were ones that had up to five.
Okay, I think that when they came in, there was very minimal connections. It was clear that they were trying to piece together what would be a large single-family home and just kind of work around the requirements that way. I think that the parking, I think, is insufficient for one and a half spaces per unit for a five, six, seven, eight-bedroom unit.
Agreed, it's terrible.
And I think the pools, I think that really gives the project a different kind of quality with individual pools as opposed to a condominium development, which resort attached dwelling was contemplated to be, where you have one pool that everyone shares. Now you have the ability to have these individual units with their own pool. I'm not making a case that it's a bad thing, it serves a certain need, but I don't think it really falls within what was intended by the RAD definition.
Vice Mayor.
I'm wondering, these units are being built with six to eight bedrooms, but I've actually stayed in something similar to this in another city. And does it have the ability, do these have the ability, or are these set up where it's multi-level? Say it's three levels, level one has three bedrooms, level two has three bedrooms, level three has two bedrooms. And each level is its own private, it's basically a triplex built on top of each other. Each level has its own kitchen, each level has, you know, the bathrooms, everything else. Is that how this is being built? And then there's one common pool for the three levels, who could be three different parties sharing one pool?
I cannot tell by the floor plans that that was the case. It appears to be one unit with one kitchen.
That's the way the unit that I'm familiar with, that I have stayed in, was set up where all the three levels could be locked, where level two doesn't have access to level one or three and, and other combinations.
No, these are true, just large, large.
A big house with eight bedrooms.
Yeah, and I'm sure most of us have stayed in them, these type of facilities.
If you've got one house with eight bedrooms, you're going to have parties, that's all it's going to be, is parties.
And I, you know, I think that the intent, when you have that number of bedrooms, is they're not going to be occupied by full-time residents, which was one of the provisions of the resort attached dwellings. So, you know, if this is something that the council wants to allow in a different format, or have some different requirements, you know, tying parking regulations to the number of bedrooms or whatever it may be, I just think we might want to make some adjustments to the code. And then again, the city manager has articulated concerns about the impacts of them, you know, as Councilmember Hamilton was saying, you know, the concern about big party houses. I'm not sure how you get around all of that, you know, but.
Well, I mean, this reminds me very much of Reunion over in Orlando, which is an area that they have houses that run from four bedrooms all the way up to 12 bedrooms with, I mean, just enormous kitchens and, you know, video rooms. I have a college roommate that rents one for all of his employees when they have conventions in Orlando. And rather than having a booth, they have all of their business partners come to this house, and they have a chef. And it's a lot of cars. The cars, I think, are my biggest concern. I think we do need to recognize that the market continues to morph. And a lot of people like verbos and having a house atmosphere rather than a hotel atmosphere. I just think what we need to try to do is minimize what the negative impacts are going to be to the already existing business and residents that are up on North Beach in the Old Florida District. So, other questions or comments? Councilmember Albrecht.
Well, I'm kind of close to this kind of a dwelling, because I used to own an apartment building the next street over from this, and I actually rented the house. We used to rent the house, but, but's the one on Idlewild, always. Now, that, that street had, I think it was four houses, and then it had a little motel at the end that was there for like years and years. I can tell you that my concern would be on this kind of thing, is, I agree with the mayor, it's going to be the parking. I mean, even with our four-unit little apartment building we had, if you had, if you had two families or friends coming in to each unit, I mean, you had, you didn't have enough parking. And I can tell you, if each one of these bedrooms, you know, each places has, I mean, I could see where a family, a big family or two couples, maybe with their kids, would come in. But that's not what I'm thinking of, I'm thinking of like a bunch of spring breakers coming down, like 20. And each one of them's going to have, I mean, you're going to have 10 cars where they only have two. Where are they going to be? It's going to, it's going to be an issue. So I think you need to really think about the worst-case scenario and then plan for that. And maybe we have to do something, you know, about the parking, so.
Didn't we have that one motel on Bay Esplanade, right over by the rec center, that you rented the whole motel?
Yes, the, yes.
And it had like 12 or 14?
Coconut something Grove, I think it was called, yeah. That was a kind of a neat concept, but I could tell you, I mean, even that had a lot of the neighbors upset with it, you know, with the parking and the noise. It's, and the Old Florida District is, in my recollection, is kind of for tourists, you know?
It's on tourists.
Yeah, so we don't want to really, you know, inhibit that. And I know things change, maybe this is, but I just worry about the parking. And, you know, you're going to have, you're going to have a problem with that. So we probably need to look at how we can handle that.
Do you have any feedback on the pool issue, or whether you would rather see this type of product as a single-family home? Or would you prefer that we not open it up for that? I'm just curious if.
I don't know if I have a huge problem with the pool, frankly. I mean, it's, it's kind of open area, and it reduces, you know, all of the mass where that is. I mean, if they're staying below the height restrictions, I, I mean, I can understand why people would want an independent pool. So I don't know if I have a huge problem with that. I think the biggest thing is, the number of people is going to lend itself. You could have a family, you could have also 30 college kids with a DJ and goodness knows what at one of the sites. And one's fine, it doesn't disturb anybody, and the other one turns into just a nightmare. And regulating that, I think, is very difficult. Maybe if they had a unified pool, that would somewhat moderate behavior at one of them, because they'd have to share it. But on its own, I don't, I think staff needs to try to identify all the potential unintended consequences that are going to come from this type of development.
That's a big one.
And even with all that work, you're not going to think of them all, I know. That's why they're unintended consequences. But I think we can probably let our imaginations run wild.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can, as I look at the drawings, the architecturals on this, given the size of the buildings and where the pools are located, I'm not exactly sure how much sun the pools themselves are going to get. And if it's, you know, Frank's fraternity from Florida State that rents that house for spring break, to be honest with you, when you're on spring break, you know, when kids are on spring break, they don't want to be around one pool with them, with each other, with just their group. They want to be out meeting other people, so they're going to be on the beach, they're going to be out, out and about. And then at night is when it's going to be a problem. There's a whole nother consideration, not, not a, you know, I was having a conversation with our chief, and this is a little off topic, but, you know, we've got six or eight package stores on Clearwater Beach selling, selling packaged liquor and styrofoam coolers when we don't allow alcohol out on our beach. There's a, there's a disconnect there. We've got lots of access to alcohol and styrofoam coolers, and we don't allow alcohol on our beach. So there's a, there's a real, you know, conflict there, but, and that's just from a police standpoint. But, but I can see probably more negatives than positives to this type of a development, I really do. I mean, just because of, if you're going to have a group of people, you know, that need an eight-bedroom house. I don't know.
Councilmember Beckman, and then Albrecht.
I had, you know, I share all your concerns. I, I would be incredibly nervous if some eight-bedroom home, you know, was built next to mine. eight-bedroom home, you know, was built next to mine, on the beach. But when you look at parking being some type of a factor to use to manipulate parking requirements, one thing I'm thinking is, you know, we wanna reduce the traffic, and we want to incentivize or encourage people to use public transportation, or Uber or something. And so if we don't increase the parking, or allow them more parking spaces, and they, as far as I know, they're not allowed to park on the neighborhood streets, and so the logical thing is, there might be two cars there, and they either Uber, or they just spend their time walking or biking around that Clearwater Beach area, which I think is what we want, right? We wanna reduce congestion, traffic congestion, and if they're walking or biking, they're gonna spend their dollars in a closer, right, perimeter. So that's something to think about as well.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you, that's our goal, but, you know, if the worst case happens, you know, I think with the families, it might be a little more controlled, because, you know, you may have four, a family of four arriving in one car, and another family of four in one car. I think the issue becomes, you know, when you have people that aren't related, and they're coming together, you know, it's kind of hard to say. If there is a parking problem, where are they gonna park? And then what kind of issues are it's gonna, so there is a balance. You know, there's some apartment codes that base parking requirements on the number of bedrooms, so it gets a little bit larger if you start adding more and more bedrooms. So we could maybe look at something like that, so that it's not a huge parking requirement, but it better accommodates what it is they're trying to do.
Parking and people are kind of like water, they go wherever they want.
True, true, that's why we won't prevent all unintended consequences. I, any thoughts about the single-family home, or you prefer this type of thing be attached? Do you have any opinion on that? I mean, it would introduce something new to the tourist district that is not allowed, but I just wanted, while I was here, to see if you had any thoughts about maybe up in Old Florida, it's appropriate or not. I mean, one of the, the projects basically has a small, I'm gonna do this, it's a small connection, and it's basically bathroom, back-to-back bathrooms, and that's how, you know, they've connected.
So they're sharing a wet wall, basically?
They're sharing a quote-unquote "common" wall, and it meets the definition, but it's not really like a, a true meaningful attached dwelling. But with that also allows them to, you know, maybe do something that's, has a little more building modulation in it, so there's potentially, I guess, pros and cons with it.
I'm reluctant to try to regulate what I believe, you know, industry is going towards. What I think we ought to regulate is against what can become a nuisance. So minimizing the nuisance to the rest of the area, but trying to determine what the market desires, I think, first of all, is not our place, and secondly, I think is somewhat fruitless. I think you can see that the market is going that way, I don't like what the legislature has done to other cities around the state with Verbo, but I think the fact that people do want something different from just hotel rooms, I think giving people choice is not a bad thing. And if you look at our TDC receipts throughout the entire county, you will see that the trend has been that, as many hotel rooms as have been added, there is a lot of rentals that are also adding to the bed tax, which isn't the end-all, be-all, but it shows that there is a desire for people to wanna do it. There was an interesting article, I can't remember if it was in the Journal, or I heard it on NPR, but it was frightening how much people are buying places to rent them, and what they would rent a unit for on a monthly basis versus what they're renting it for on a short-term basis over a month, is tenfold in many cases. Now, it may not be year-round, but this is a trend, and it is not going away, because it's profitable. So I think we need to figure out how to make it fit within the context of what we want Clearwater Beach and Clearwater to be. Did we cover what you want? Or are you still looking for additional guidance?
No, I, I, we certainly will work with Gina to come up with some appropriate changes, although, while Airbnb and Verbo and those type of things are here to stay, I think that we, as the governing body, have to be very careful as to what is allowed, because I could certainly see our police department being called on any number of occasions, and it will escalate to the point where, you know, it will be a consistent problem. And what I'm, the reason I brought it before all of you today is to make sure that you're aware of certainly the concerns that I think staff has, and the hope of making some adjustments that will make this less attractive, I guess, for developers. Not trying to control the market, per se, but certainly trying to make it work for the city.
As long as it's within the context of him feeling comfortable with it. Okay, anything else, Mr. Jennings?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our...
Thank you, Ms. Clayton.
I wanted to thank our police department. Over the weekend, our police department did a phenomenal job on, on motor vehicle citations, as well as citing some of the establishments for underage drinking. I did wanna let the community know, now that we have spring break in full force, we have moved several of our police assets, individuals, and, and other equipment to the beach area in order to prevent any of the problems that have happened in the past. Chief Slaughter brought that plan to me, and I just wanna thank him publicly for doing that. I also just wanted to thank the Peace Memorial Church, they put on a fantastic Bach concert yesterday, Beth Daniels, who has been working for the last 15 years on this concert series, and then, of course, we have the Phillies opening up this Saturday at 1:05 at Bay Cat Park, their opening day for spring training, so.
We look forward to that. Nothing else, sir?
That is it.
Mr. Margolis, say anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. City Council Discussion Items, Tampa Bay Estuary Program update, Councilmember Beckman.
Thank you. I just wanted to provide an update, I'm glad Sarah Kessler's here, in case I have any, hopefully not missteps, but I wanted to give you kind of an overview. I sit on the Tampa Bay Estuary Programs Board, and we meet quarterly, and my, here we go, my little iPad was acting up, but we're good. Okay, so I've given you the handout that's attached to the agenda, and that's provided to me by the Tampa Bay Estuary Program, and they encourage the members to communicate with their other board members about what's going on, and giving an update. So our members, you can see right here on, on this PowerPoint, we have three different counties, and then we have some municipalities, and then we also have the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, SWFMD, and the United States EPA, and so that's, those are the people who come to the table for this policy board that I sit on and report back to you. So the next slide is, basically, when we talk about an estuary, what is it? And I think if you flip over your, your page, maybe, Mark, can you, Mr. Councilmember, if you flip that over, do we have a map on the other side of your thing? Oh, we don't. Okay, well, anyway, it's, it's the Tampa Bay area out by Courtney Campbell Causeway, and the estuary is this semi-enclosed body of water where fresh water from rivers meets and mixes with salt water from the ocean, so it's this transition between land and water, and what's really important, as I'm learning, is that it's a crucial part of our ecosystem for our shellfish, crustaceans, and our sea creatures, in order for them to grow and survive, which feeds into our fishing industry, and tourism, and all sorts of things. The next slide. So we're one of 28 national estuary programs around the country, it's designated by Congress, it's administered under the EPA and the Clean Water Act, and the program is governed by this policy board, which is, I'm part of it, of elected officials, and then a management board, which Ms. Kessler sits on that one, that has subject matter experts, experts from the different governing bodies, and so they work with both technical and citizen advisory groups to meet their goals. The next slide says, how large is it? So Tampa Bay's is Florida's largest open-water estuary, it's 400 miles, square miles, with this watershed more than five times that large, that large that feeds into it. I found it interesting that, on average, Tampa Bay measures only about 11 feet deep, however, we have a number of man-made shipping channels that allow large boats safe passage, the largest one is 43 feet deep and 40 miles long, just a little background. So why should we care? Well, these are the goals of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program as set forth by Congress. We have, their goal is, an informed, engaged, and responsible community that strives for cleaner waters and sediments, that's that ground of the, of the bay, thriving habitats and abundant life. And then, you know, which this resonates with everyone, is the economy, all of which will sustain our economy, tourism, recreation, fishing, and impact our quality of life, when we're out there swimming in the water, boating, or kayaking, or whatever we do. Some of the habitats that are part of our Tampa Bay are mangrove forests, and I'm not gonna read all this, but they provide shelter and food for sea critters, salt marshes, that, again, provide food and shelter, and I've got highlighted here, as tidal waters move up into the marsh and then retreat, detritus is carried away and distributed throughout the estuary, which serves as a food source, and then seagrass beds, which you might be more, most familiar with, which are out there, they help clean the water, and they certainly help, you know, with our manatee population, and they stabilize the sediment with their roots and rhizomes, much the way land grass would keep hold of soil on, on the earth. All right? They, and then highlighted, I have, they provide shelter for many fishes, crustaceans, and shellfish, and they and the organisms that grow in them are food for many marine animals and water birds. And so we need these, as I'm learning, and again, Sarah, Sarah wants to correct, but as we, you know, these different habitats provide for the fish that go out to the reefs and out into our, our Gulf, that, you know, fuel our economy and fishermen. I have a slide about manatees in particular, so last year we lost over 1,000 manatees, mostly because they're starving, and it's more on the eastern part of the state, not as much here. But these sea mammals live in shallow water, they're threatened by boats that will come upon them, as well as starvation, and they don't move fast. If boats come, they're not like a dolphin that gets out the way. And so there's some stats on, on manatees there. One of the questions I had in relation to Imagine Clearwater was a study on our seagrass out there, you know, at the base of Imagine Clearwater, what it is, and what might happen if we allow a bunch of boats to moor there during concerts, so that's upcoming. But it's, again, it's about protecting seagrasses, not only for manatees, but for other species. So the Tampa Bay Estuary Program is mostly there to protect that water and clean it up, and so I have a slide here on what affects water quality. So certainly nitrogen is a major pollutant in Tampa Bay, although plants do need nitrogen, you have excess nitrogen, it really burns them and kills them, and, and that's what's happening. In the past, it's interesting that I learned that wastewater, sewage discharges were once a major source of nitrogen to Tampa Bay, however, in the 70s, we have major improvements to sewage treatment plants, and as we annex these people in who are getting off of septic and onto city water and sewer, that's a help. And so there's been a reduction by more than 90% of the sewage, raw sewage getting into the bay, that's contributing to those high nitrogen levels. Currently, more than half the nitrogen entering Tampa Bay comes from stormwater runoff, and from urban and residential areas, and stormwater is the water that runs off the land with rainfall, carrying with it fertilizer, pesticide residues, as well as trash. So that's where we really need to look, and we have legislation that, you know, requires us to do more reclaimed water, because we're not gonna be allowed to dump the reclaimed water out into the bay.
We also passed local ordinances in Pinellas Hillsboro, and our city did, back in the early 2000s, to eliminate people fertilizing during certain months, which did make a big impact.
I, I think that's great, too. I, I'm aware of that, but I also sadly am aware, a lot of times you'll see signs in stores that say, you know, pesticide ordinance or restrictions go into effect in June, and so buy it up now. So anyway, it's, it, we do have restrictions, but they're not always followed. But what's interesting here, the last bullet point, is about one-quarter of the present nitrogen load to Tampa Bay comes from atmospheric deposition of air pollution, primarily from power plants and automobile, and automobiles. And so that's, you know, again, I think that's pretty significant, and that's why when we have these green print goals and, and clean energy goals, it affects our water, not just the air we breathe, but what gets deposited into our water. Specific concerns for Clearwater is that we did not meet quality standards in Old Tampa Bay, and, and this has been going on for a while. We're not the only ones in control of the water in Tampa Bay, but it is on our shoreline, and we do that testing. We do not have to pay any fines at that time if we demonstrate that we're working on the problem, which we do demonstrate that. The solutions are prevention and remediation to alleviate nitrogen problems. Obviously, we wanna start at the source and reduce it as much as possible. We can use federal infrastructure funds for water improvements. In my conversations with Ms. Kessler, we talked about looking for funding for Cooper's Point, where the end goal is increasing circulation out there, so that'll be interesting to see how we can move forward with that. And not only will those improvements increase circulation, but they'll be beneficial to residents for kayaking, and boardwalks, and, and opening up that area more. Our causeway, going out to, out the Courtney Campbell, when you take that causeway, and you go over that seven-mile causeway or so to the airport, is reducing the flow of water, and we still need to look at improvements there, and you can imagine that's a multimillion-dollar project, but it's something that the Tampa Bay Estuary Board recognizes, that anytime you have an impediment to the flow, and you're not distributing that, you're not moving that water enough, you have a buildup of nitrogen and, and bad chemicals. And then other, other concerns for Clearwater is, we should be committed to protecting seagrass beds in our area. I brought up the idea on the next slide, looking to expand our Tampa Bay Estuary Program boundaries to include more of St. Joseph's Sound and the waterways near Clearwater. This has been discussed at the board level, the executive board, as well as the management board. We just signed a new inter-local agreement that's in effect for the next five years, but there was really good discussion about the need to expand it, which would bring more grant monies to our area, and that'll be on the, that's on the radar to incorporate that into the next inter-local agreement. We are at a little, and there are more...
When is that?
The next inter-local agreement? This one is in effect until 27, I think, and so it'll be after that, but we have to work on it in the years before in order to get by, and we have other communities north of us that are advocating for inclusion as well, because they want services and grant money. But we're a couple of steps ahead, because we, St. Joseph's Sound already has a comprehensive conservation management plan, which means we've already done some initial studies and are doing assessments, so we are... So we are a few steps ahead, which bodes well for us getting that. It means that our contribution would be a little bit more, and that we'd have to ask for contributions from places like Indian Rocks Beach or Indian Shores. But I think that that'll, it's negligible in the whole scheme of things. The successes for Tampa Bay Estuary Program, I just wanted to review what we're getting for our money and the good things that they're doing. Oh, here we go. We signed the interlocal agreement through 2026. They have been the chief monitoring and communications source point for everything related to Piney Point discharge, and they've done a phenomenal job with that. On your handout, you can see they're doing a scallop study to decide, to determine how healthy the scallops are, and where the little baby scallops, how far they can be transplanted and survive. There's a study on Tampa Bay hard bottom habitats and the health and abundance of reef fish. There is a link between seagrass nurseries and offshore reefs in the Gulf. I mentioned that a couple of times. So we want to keep that healthy. And they're, you know, they're about community engagement as far as helping them develop policy as well as education. And so they have a behavior changer and education campaign to encourage homeowners and homebuyers to inspect, repair, or replace aging private lateral sewer lines to prevent those sewer overflows. They are, do oyster bay restorations, environmental cleanups, and they do education on landscaping with native or drought resistant plants. They cost less to maintain, and they require fewer chemicals. And they also hosted a national conference in February, where scientists came from all over the area to talk about keeping estuaries clean.
Any questions for Councilmember Beckman?
Well, along those lines, being my last chance to say it from here, I would love, and I wish we could find a way, mangroves, absolutely essential. Sea grapes, Brazilian peppers are not. I would love the opportunity to get some of that removed off of our causeway, and I would love the opportunity to trim mangroves. You're not affecting the root system, which is essential. And mangroves are just like many other plants, that if they're properly trimmed, it doesn't harm it, it makes it a more healthy plant. And we need to be looking at those opportunities. We've let the causeway get to such a level now that it's going to be a sizable expense to try and do it. But again, it makes those mangroves that much more healthy to be able to, you know, if we do some trimming of them, and it might increase the visibility and beauty of our causeway beyond what it already is. Secondly, I've screamed out, I've asked about it and talked about it for four, well, the last 20 years from here, 14 while I sat here. I don't know if the Tampa Estuary Program has any pull to get Dunedin Pass reopened. You talk about water quality. The water quality up in North Clearwater Bay is nowhere near what it was when Clearwater, when Dunedin Pass was open. Used to not be able to walk to Caladeese Island, that's why it was called Caladeese Island. It's no longer an island. And if we can get that pass reopened, you would see the water quality improve 10-fold. And it's just a matter of doing it. So if you can keep working on that, I'd appreciate it, because I've been asking for 20 years and haven't made it, haven't been able, haven't been able to get there.
Okay. I'll ask about those things. You're talking about reducing the mangroves primarily for aesthetics?
No, no, no. Basically, I want to keep them as healthy as possible, but to just trim them, you know, lower, you know, yeah, you can cut them down, you can, I think the, and I may be-
We looked at it, it was extraordinarily expensive.
Extraordinarily expensive, but you can, you can trim them, you can trim like 30% or 35% annually. You can trim them 35% because it'll grow, it grows back. But it just, when you drive across the causeway, the mangroves are one thing, but the sea grapes and the Brazilian peppers that are invasive are just, you know, all over the place. And if we can get some of that cleared out, I think a lot of that would, you know, go a long way, but that's-
So that's a budget item? Sea grapes and Brazil-
That's for Mr. Jennings to find the money and-
Well, Brazilian peppers are invasive, so they ought to be taken out. They compete.
Yeah, we discussed this at one point, and this is something that I've talked with staff about. So both the trimming, although extremely expensive, but certainly the invasives, we have to be on top of.
I think the last time we looked at it, I think it was a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah. Sure, that'd be on the low side, I would think.
It was real money.
And it's got to be, it needs to be trimmed by a certified arborist, and you can't just have a local civic group go out there and start trimming them. No, it needs to be done properly.
I completely agree with you on the pass.
Absolutely.
The water quality has plummeted since those days. Plus, we have a lot of critters now on Clearwater Beach that never used to be there, including snakes that are venomous. So, but that, that horse has left the barn. All right. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any new business for future meetings? Councilmember Beckman?
Yeah, at the April council meeting, I understand the vice mayor role is going to be rotating to me under Rule 5. And during the April meeting, I'm going to be making a motion to suspend Rule 5 to enable a different council member to serve as the vice mayor for the year. No need to make a motion today, I just wanted to give you a heads up that I plan to do that.
Okay. Councilmember Albreton?
Yeah, at a future council meeting, I'd like to talk about, let's take another look at the traffic on south of the roundabout on the beach. I'd like to have an engineering firm look at that and come up with some ideas. I know we've talked about it in the past, and, you know, the people that live on South Beach were crazy about the one-way traffic because it affected them getting in and out of their houses. But I'm telling you, we've, we've got a horrible situation there, especially when it gets crowded, people coming in. I mean, if you're trying to get from South Beach just to the roundabout, you're talking over an hour when it's really busy. I just think at some point, we need to be talking about how we can really look at that and see what we can do with that traffic situation.
To include one-way pairs?
I think we just need to look at whatever we can do.
I can, I'll chime in here. If you ask residents of the south, south end of Clearwater Beach in September, do you want one-way pairs? They'd say absolutely not.
Yeah.
Go out there this coming weekend, on Saturday and Sunday, and ask me if they'd like one-way pairs, which will move the traffic much more. They don't want to have to drive an extra couple blocks to turn and come and get to their house, and I understand that. But when you absolutely can't get away from your house when we're at peak season, they probably have a little different attitude towards it. But we tried to get a, at one point, we talked about doing a six-month trial just to see, and we couldn't, couldn't pull the trigger on it. And I think something like that's probably ultimately what needs to be done. Do a, do a trial on it and, you know, see if it does work.
What, excuse me, why couldn't you pull it off the trial?
Couldn't get three votes. It's this, it's been discussed numerous times. And they side Brightwater and mostly Devon. Some of those folks did not want it, and the council, as the vice mayor said, didn't pull the trigger. So, okay. We'll get that on the agenda, Councilmember Beckman.
Yeah, I wanted to have on the future work session, possible bike legislation in Clearwater. And so this would be, I don't know, did you guys get an email from Howard Warshower about different bicycling initiatives in Orlando and St. Pete, actually? And so this is like incentivizing businesses for bike racks, bike friendly businesses, things like that. And so I thought he sent me a couple of ordinances and articles, and I thought it was worth a discussion.
Okay. And then, this is really somewhat trivial, but I'd like to, we either have to start enforcing our artificial turf ordinance, or we need to change it. Because I've seen, currently it's not allowed, but I've seen it now in Skycrest on Clearwater Beach. And I think technology's changed, so I think it's worthy of a discussion. But we're either not enforcing it, or we need to change the ordinance. So I'd like to have staff prepare to discuss that. All righty, with that, Vice Mayor.
And I'm going to take 10 minutes here rather than doing it on Thursday night. And it's more, and I don't, Captain, I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but there was an article a couple weeks ago, or 10 days ago, that Tracy wrote about Clearwater being behind Largo and Dunedin, moving forward with alternative energy and all that. I have yet to talk to the first person that's not willing and interested in moving towards alternative energy. Not everybody's as passionate as you about it. But not everybody is absolutely, has their blood pressure rise every time the word Clearwater gas gets mentioned like you, like yours does sometimes. And I, I look at Clearwater gas as a, I look at natural gas, not just Clearwater gas, but natural gas, as an absolutely essential source of energy and application in today's society. My business couldn't run without natural gas at the Palm Pavilion. We couldn't do it as efficiently and productively as we do. We have homeowners that prefer natural gas in their home. Dunedin, Largo, all them are talking about, you know, what they're doing, but they have natural gas consumers as well, businesses and residents. And the difference is, Clearwater gas gets the money from those people. Those people buy their gas from Clearwater gas, and the people of Clearwater benefit from that. Because we see the money, we see the dividends. I mean, the annual dividend for, or the annual money from Clearwater gas averages a little over $9 million a year to our, to the city of Clearwater. And about 3.3 million of that is a, is a direct dividend that goes straight into, and what I would prefer, you know, I mean, I'm surprised, and if I were in your shoes, I would, I would try to recognize the importance of what Clearwater gas does and the need for that product in our society today. If it's not needed in 50 years, that's a different, different story, but it's needed today. And, I mean, I would, I mean, I'll put it out there, and I'm not going to take credit for it, but I would look at it, if I were in your shoes, say, okay, I'm not a fan of it, but why don't we take 10% of the annual dividend, 3.3 million dollars is the average, I think, over the last five years? Let's take 10% of that and put it directly into alternative energy opportunities. I mean, 10% of 3.33, you have $300,000 right off the top to put solar panels on the roof of the Washington Street Housing Development, or on a city building. You know, as we replace roofs and do roof improvements to city buildings, there's a funding source for solar panels. If you make it a policy of the council, or that we're going to take 10% of Clearwater gas's dividend and put it directly into alternative energy, I think that would be very beneficial. And I could support, I would support that. I won't be sitting here by the time staff goes through the process of bringing something like that forward, but I just, I really hope that at some point, you know, people realize, nobody's against, that I'm aware of, discovering and exploring and developing alternative energy opportunities, but today's society still has necessities. Natural gas is a necessity in today's society. Gasoline is still a necessity in today's society, because not every car on the road runs on electric. But, you know, we're working towards that. We're getting more electric cars on the road, I understand that. Hell, I might even buy one at some point in the future. But I live in today's world, and I can't survive, my business can't survive without natural gas. And natural gas is not an evil thing. It's a necessary thing, in my mind. So I'm just wanting to put that out there. I didn't want Thursday night to be a negative, I just wanted to put it out there. I really do. I mean, if, 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 I would think it'd be a great thing for, for council to establish a policy to say, let's take a certain amount of this money. This is, this is just cash money that's going to go into reserves, directly into reserves. If you hold 10% of that back and put it into alternative energy opportunities, I can't imagine not, somebody not supporting someone of that nature. So maybe you can bring that forward in the future and get it passed.
Anything else you have?
No, sir. I'll stop there.
Councilmember Beckman, do you have a retort?
Well, I don't know, let me see. Well, first of all-
She's clatter, believe me.
I, I'm so glad you feel comfortable voicing your opinion, and I appreciate that. And thank you very much for your service to the city. I will say a couple things. Number one, I just want to make it clear, when I ask questions, it's not because I'm against something, it's because I want to understand more, and I want to, you know, be an incredibly good steward of the public's money and health and safety. And so that's what I'm motivated by. And, you know, I ask questions about, you know, for example, I'm just going to say this because you started, but, you know, we're, we're going to the, or we're invited to the Phillies spring training opener on Saturday, and so we got an email to represent the city. And we got an email on Friday that said, you know, the game's this weekend, and whatever, whatever. And, and I love supporting the Phillies, and I plan to be there, but I just wrote back, you know, can you share with me the cost of the ticket? Because for me, I pay my ticket because I don't like to take a gift from an entity that would come to us asking for funds and support. And, you know, and, and some people took that as, I know you don't like the Phillies, or you don't support the Phillies, or whatever. And that's wrong. When I ask questions about funding or appropriations, I ask for the residents to protect our city coffers and to make wise decisions. It's true, I draw, I ask questions about our gas company, and, and I ask them because of, you know, there's an incredible amount of money that goes out in the name of advertising. And Tracy, too, did an incredible article about that. So those are the questions I ask related to expenditures and sponsorships by the gas company. The other question, or the other point I would make is, you know, I am an environmentalist and do care about pollution and reducing carbon emissions, and believe in climate change, and that carbon production and pollution greatly affects the acceleration of climate change. And scientists agree that by reducing our carbon emissions, we can slow that down. That's the source. And so I want to work on the source as much as we work on mediation with sea walls and and rising the heights of, you know, the floorboards in our building code and things like that. When we, when I asked for energy expert Sol Haroun to come and give a presentation early last year, that was to lay the foundation for science and what the future is for energy in our country. And so he gave us the financials, and where is it heading? I believe, as owners of a gas company, we need to know- I believe as owners of a gas company, we need to know where that asset is positioned and what we see it doing in the future again to protect our residents, aside from the health impacts of carbon production. And and so that's why I ask questions. And, you know, and and I would say, you know, whoops, what was that? Oh, one of my earrings. I would say that, you know, you proposing that we use some of gas revenues and earmark them for a green fund, that's phenomenal. I love that idea. I would fully support that idea. But that doesn't mean we stop asking questions about the operation of the gas company. I am not against it. Asking questions does not mean I think it's evil or that I think we should close it tomorrow or that it's not necessary for some industries or whatever. So let me be clear with that. And and so, you know, I guess that's part of, you know. It's a polluter. It's a polluting industry, business that we own and we promote, when we promote it and we lay more gas pipe, we're increasing pollution. And so we just have to be clear about that as well, whereas, you know, solar and wind don't produce pollution.
Oh, I, we can point counterpoint for, for a while because, you know, if, I can promise you, there are experts out there in the field that I could, we could, the city could bring in here and can tell you that some of the green energy initiatives aren't as green as you think they are in the long run because of disposal of them at the, at the end of their, end of their useful life and things of that nature. But the other point about the Phillies and the the cost of a ticket, I've always had the opinion, you can have a different opinion, you're welcome to it, but we as elected officials by state statute are allowed to accept, and David, I think it's state statute, we're allowed to accept any gift under a hun, that's valued under $100, and we don't have to claim it. But as long as it's under $100. And if anybody out there thinks that a ticket to opening day to the Phillies is going to swing your vote one way or the other by you accepting that ticket, they don't know you. They truly don't know you, nor do they know me if they think my getting a ticket from the Phillies means I'm going to support the Phillies and buy whatever they ask for, that's what they're going to get. No, it just, we're better, we are, we're better than that. And I just, you know, you don't need, you shouldn't feel the need to come out of your own pocket for a ticket of that value to say that. I mean, nobody, nobody believes, I would never believe for a second that that ticket, if you accept it without paying for it, is going to influence your vote on something down the road. I, I, you're, you're a much better lady than that. And so it's a, it's just, and I, I, trust me, I respect and appreciate your passion for, for environmental issues. I really do. Me, I'm, I understand them, but I also, like, like I've always said, you know, sea level rise, everybody talks sea level, sea level rise. When the Palm Pavilion was built, high tide came under the Palm Pavilion. That's why it's on stilts. Now you got a three beer walk down to the water, or a three Coke walk down to the water since we don't allow alcohol on the beach. You know, three Coke walk down to the water, you know. I don't see, you know, I'm, you look at that and it's like, I'm not sure I, I 100% subscribe to the, to all of the calculations. I mean, but it is what it is. And I, and I know there are certain, certain things that are indisputable, but I don't, I don't subscribe to some of the doomsday things that they try to bring out. And and that's just me. We're all different. And I think that's a great thing to have different views from up here. So, you know, like I said, you can take credit if you want to bring forward a, a policy to take a certain amount of money from Clearwater Gas and put it into those opportunities, you can take credit for it. I just planted the seed.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right.
Wait a minute. I was going to propose that at a future meeting, I'll bring forth the Hoyt Hamilton Legacy Solar Project.
There you go.
We'll get that agended. We're adjourned.